Good afternoon. My name is Max Parker. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Trustees for the San Angelo Independent School District. Mr. Lehman, our president, is out of town, so I'll be sitting in for him and helping get the meeting conducted. We welcome all of you here. To get started, I'm going to ask Pastor Craig Myers to come up. He's pastor of St. Mark Presbyterian Church to lead us in our invocation.
I asked for a trade-off. If I pray, I get to make an announcement. And it's really important, I think, for the SAISD as well as the community. In September, we dedicated the new Dunbar Library, the historical site where the African-American library was during the years of segregation. And it's right across from what was San Angelo Colored School and is now Carver Disciplinary School. But it's been totally refurbished on the outside as a historical site, but more importantly, inside, it's become a functioning library. It's got a thousand volumes of the highest-quality material having to do with African-American history, civil rights, religion, family values of minorities. And it has a selection of the very best of children's material, as well as going all the way up to academic research materials for the high school and university here. And it's open from Tuesday and Thursday and Saturday from three o'clock to seven o'clock. And I think you'd be very surprised at what you'd find there. It's a real asset to the community. And coming right after Dr. King's celebration of his birthday and just before Black History Month, my wife's the librarian at the Tom Green County Children's Department, and she says about this time of year, teachers come all the time looking for resources to help them use that particular topic during February. So we'd invite everybody to go out there. And on the back table, as you leave, there's some bookmarks and a few brochures about where we are. So you've given me the time. I'll give you the prayer. Let's pray. Almighty God, you have blessed us with a creation that sustains us if we use it. You've created us in your image, and we have the capacity to love and learn and teach and share. And so we ask, as this body meets, that those who are in elected office, those who are citizens, those who are educators, might all see what we can do to make certain that our children and our young people have the very best opportunities, not just to learn for occupations, but for lives of caring and service and citizenship. This we ask, in the name of the God who created us all. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Myers, and thank you for telling us about the Dunbar Library. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and the Texas flag will be led tonight by five students from Fannin Elementary. And as I call your names, students, would you come forward? Angelina Garza, Carlos Garza, Christopher Krzeski, Jason Krzeski, and Imari Vincent. Would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Your parents or anybody that wants to come forward, we're going to have the students here stay up here. Do you get your photos? And thank you, guys, all of you. Did all the parents get photos, everybody? Okay. Thank you, Fannin Elementary. Great. All right. At this time, I don't know who's, is it Mr. Jackson or Jana? Who's going to be taking over right now? Derek Jackson and Dr. Ritter?
Sir. As our students get into place, thank you, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. On behalf of SAISD, it is my great privilege to thank you this evening during School Board Recognition Month in Texas. We thank you for your dedication and your willingness to serve as advocates for our students. Even though we recognize you in January, it is your year-round commitment that we honor. We know that you have vast responsibilities and that you often must make difficult choices. Our district benefits from your tireless work and your countless hours that you each contribute. We would also like to acknowledge and thank our mayor on behalf of the City Council for proclaiming January as School Board Month here in San Angelo. When you arrived this evening, you may have seen the banner just over my shoulder there, recognizing the school board. And we feel like it's very appropriate, as our school board has gone to great lengths, to help the students of SAISD soar to success. Gerard Gallegos, Amy Maazel Flint, Bill Dindel, Lanny Lehman, who's not here tonight, Max Parker, Art Hernandez, and Dr. Taylor Kingman, we thank you. Right now, we have a special presentation by several of our students. Through collaborative processes involving the District Advisory Council, teaching-for-learning teacher and administrative teams, and the SISD Board of Trustees, the district developed a future-ready learner profile that represents the goals we have for all of our students. These attributes encompass the qualities and characteristics we believe are important for our students to attain in order to be highly capable and successful throughout their future endeavors. Facilitating and guiding the development of these prioritized skills will be the focus of all educators and support roles in the district. As part of our school board recognition tonight and our academic focus for this month, we have invited several SISD students to present the final version of our SISD, SAISD, excuse me, future-ready learner profile. Our learner profile is being implemented on every campus in the district, and we are excited to see evidence of these skills and attributes in classrooms throughout San Angelo ISD. It is with your encouragement, support, and commitment that we are able to provide this focus for all students at all levels across the district. At the end of our presentation, we will introduce these great students behind me, all of whom demonstrate these attributes in their school and their community lives. So with that said, we will begin with the learner profile quadrant for communicator. And I will step back and let a student read.
Builds positive and productive relationships, offers and accepts feedback to growth self and others, expresses ideas confidently and creatively in a variety of modes.
Connects globally, communicates ideas respectfully, and honors the contributions
Next, we will move to the LP quadrant of the collaborator and contributor.
Shares responsibility for collaborative work and seeks and evaluates a range of points
Applies learning to transform the world, views problems globally.
Invests in continuous community improvement, leaves a legacy, influence others for positive outcomes.
Next, we'll move to the quadrant of critical thinker.
Views problems with a global perspective, takes initiative.
Exhibits perseverance and resilience in challenges, explores answers beyond the literal.
Applies reflection and self-assessment and seeks opportunities to solve problems.
And next, we move to the final quadrant of the learner profile, which is the creator.
Asks deep and thoughtful questions, challenges existing ways of thinking, and explores through
Learns from experiences and exhibits flexibility and adaptability.
Well, you guys did that, but let's do it one more time. Let's give these great students a round of applause. So the next thing we'd like to do for you, board, is just to have the students come up and introduce themselves and tell you they're grade and what campus they are on.
My name is Wyatt Waters. I am a 12th grader at Central High School.
My name is Brooke Jackson. I'm a sophomore at Central High School.
My name is Jason Packard, and I'm a sophomore at Lakeview High School.
My name is Keslin Mole, and I'm a 6th grader at Lee Middle School.
I'm Bryce Crabtree, and I'm a freshman at Lakeview High School.
I'm Noel Perez, and I'm a 12th grader at Central High School.
My name is Camille Hawley, and I'm an 8th grader at Glenn Middle School.
My name is Austin Tyner, and I'm a senior at Central High School.
I'm Brayden Packard, and I'm a 6th grader at Lincoln Middle School.
My name is Ethan Packard, and I am at Holloman Elementary.
Okay, so what we're going to do now, we'd like, before we get into that, let's thank the elementary art teacher, Gwen Woodward, for working with our elementary art students to create some beautiful works of art that we're going to share with you, board members. That's going to exemplify our learner profile. So now we'll ask the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Detloff, if you could come down and help me, to join us on the floor as we call your name to receive your recognition and to have So first up, Gerard Gallegos. Next up is Amy Maazel Flint. Yes. We're going to have a group photo at the end, so please stay aboard. Again, on behalf of all the students and faculty at SAISD, we thank you for your commitment and support, and we thank all of our students who participated tonight in this recognition opportunity. So now we'll take a couple of photos. Yes, please clap, and we'll take a couple of photos.
Yes. Yes, just like that. If you can open up your artwork, that's terrific.
Yeah, listen, I was thinking if we can get, yeah, kind of squeeze together. Yeah, students on the front, kind of intersperse there a little bit, I think. Thank you all again.
What you may not notice or were able to see, I assume each one of these are original work. They're all signed by students' names, so Ms. Woodward evidently helped each one of these students that did this to do something different because they're all, each one of ours is different. So these are, these are all masterpieces that we get to keep. Taylor, you're not going to get them for your art museum, all right? I failed to read our introductory script that I, normally we would read right after the pledge, so let me do that, just so that our, I make note of this for our meeting. As president, or acting president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present for tonight's regular board meeting, and also want to welcome all who are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. And we appreciate all of you and your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop, which was held last Monday night. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we do have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will also make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, and I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. I thank you again for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. With that said, I will now turn it over to Dr. Detloff for a report on our long-range facilities planning committee.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Brian May, president of Angelo State University, who will be providing a report this evening on behalf of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. As Dr. May is making his way up to the podium, I want to personally thank him for his leadership. You know, this is Dr. May's second tour of duty, as far as facilities are concerned, playing an instrumental role in the 2008 Facility Committee, and he came back in 2018. So Dr. May, in 2028, will be tapping your expertise again.
Let's hope you can find somebody more qualified at that point. Well, thank you, school board and members of the school board and everybody here in the audience. It was with great pleasure to serve with this committee. And I'd like to, at this time, if the committee that is represented here, I see quite a few. Would y'all please stand? These are members who came and were a part of the committee that, they did a great job, and we all worked together, and I appreciate each and every one of them. If you could give them a round of applause, it would certainly be great. I don't know if we have a PowerPoint at this point, but nevertheless, the committee prioritized these projects using four criteria: the benefit to students, the urgency of need and equity and value, as well as the benefit to the community. Many of these institutions or facilities are located within our neighborhoods. And the one thing that we're all very proud of, and the committee was in consensus of this, is that we continue to maintain the neighborhood elementary school programs that we have now. In many of these neighborhoods, this is the, this is the hallmark. It is the focal point of that, that particular neighborhood. And it's been, been documented over and over, the added value of having these elementary schools in those neighborhoods. Of course, with our burgeoning junior highs, we're starting to see overcrowding of all kinds, the deterioration of these older buildings, as well as in our high schools. In the committee, though, however, we adjusted the priorities according to address campuses not included in the 2008 bond election. And so in doing so, and will, these will be listed, I don't know if you have the documents there, listed where it shows each of the campuses that were included in this bond election, but they're certainly numerous, covering many of the elementary schools. And then in the junior highs, we had certainly Glenn Junior High, which is, needed a lot of work. And then, of course, looking at other facilities, especially at the Central Campus, where we have a very aged gymnasium, there's no place on campus where the entire, the student body of Central can meet at any one given time, and hopefully this will alleviate a great deal of that. But having said that, on January 9th in 2018, the SAISD Long Range, Long Range Facilities Planning Committee reached unanimous consensus to recommend to the Board of Trustees to call on a May 2018 bond election in the amount of $148.9 million for the projects that were listed in, as needed. I will say, too, that I want to thank the Huckabee architects. They did the, the major work in legwork and recommending to the committee what had, what had taken place. And I will add that in the 2008 bond election, it was the same company that made the recommendations there. I hope that, as with the 2008 bond election, that we're able to deliver more than what, what we were able to, than what was bonded. And many of those projects, we're able to do extra things on each and every one of those. So in 2018, I'm hoping we had those opportunities as well. But it was certainly with the Huckabee recommendation that all of these were, were made and the priorities were set. But it was a consensus unanimous that we go forward with this bond election. And I'll entertain any questions from this.
I'd also like to second Dr. May's remarks and thank our committee. Again, it's, it's not very often that we have a unanimous recommendation coming out of the committee. Our entire committee knows that a high-quality, higher education system, coupled with a high-quality public education system, means a thriving San Angelo. So I appreciate the partnerships that we've had over many years with Angelo State University, and the leadership in this room is remarkable. So I want to personally thank our committee members for their leadership, because this will provide a positive impact, has the potential to provide a positive impact from a 30- to 50-year period for San Angelo. So thank you.
Dr. May, while you're there, how many persons are on your committee? I know they're from a cross-section all over the city, but, and how many meetings have you all had? Because I know you've been working hard on this.
We've had six meetings over a course of, I think it was like eight months, and we had 30 individuals, and representing a cross-section of educators, business people, parents, grandparents, just interested folks from all areas and all sections of the city, representing all the different districts, representing all the elementaries, junior highs, as well as both high schools. So it was a, it was a great cross-section, and we had a lot of input. There were field trips to look at these, to look at these facilities, certainly. I think we took care of the, of a lot of really bad situations, what I considered deteriorated situations in 2008. But again, these campuses that we were not able to cover in 2008, by, in this 10-year period, they've certainly deteriorated as well. And so I, I don't think there's anything in here that we could cut out, that they all have equal need for, for the particular reason that we chose them.
I don't know if there's any other board comment, but I, on behalf of the board, want to thank you and your committee for all your hard work. For the audience to understand this, we've not been a part of that process, so we're just getting this report, and we look forward to studying this report, and then we will come back in February to discuss it in more detail as a board. But tonight's not the night that we're going to be voting on it or discussing it in any detail, but this was y'all's opportunity to come to us to present what your recommendation was, and so we will begin the discussions on that, and then we'll be voting on this at a future time. But I do want to thank all of you, all of you that are here, and all of those, make sure you express our appreciation to all those committee members that are not here, that we especially thank them for all the time that they've taken out of their busy lives to study this issue and do, make recommendations what they think's best for the district for the, and for our students and students-to-be and our facilities here in San Angelo. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
I believe this is a opportunity to document this in a pictorial history. So if you guys, committee members, if you'd like to stand up, please, and our school board would like to join you, taking a team photo of our Long Range Planning Facility Committee. So school board members, if you'll join them as well, and let's, Long Range committee members, let's meet up front. We'll have We'll have a team photo, and then we can all go about, go to our practice sessions.
All right, back on our agenda, we have our minutes for the December 4th, 2017 Finance and Pre-Agenda Meeting, and the minutes from the December 11th, 2017 Regular Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion for approval, second.
There's a motion by Mr. Dindel and a second by Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes. Is there any other board discussion on the minutes? Any public comment on the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes. At this time, as I mentioned in the earlier comments, it's, if anyone has any public comments for topics not on the agenda, need to come forward. I see no one coming forward, so we'll go forward. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Ginger Moore.
Ginger, would you just go by the microphone? This is being recorded, and we need to make sure we have your name. Ginger Moore.
Hi, my question is on curriculum. I asked earlier, one of the board members a few weeks ago, if any parent can view the curriculum from the San Angelo Independent School District, and I haven't heard back, so I was just wondering, can any parent go online and view your curriculum?
I will, I will, these two ladies right over here, Dr. Ritter and Shelley.
Actually, I know Jenna from somewhere.
They're both assistants in the superintendents, and they can answer that better than I can. I just don't know.
And it's really, I wasn't sure the board would know, but I thought this might be the appropriate place to ask.
Well, we have a, we have a website that has lots on it, but I don't know if you can actually go on there. You talking about like curriculum for fifth grade social studies or something?
Right, I can go online and see the Texas Teaks, but I can't go online and see the San Angelo Independent School District curriculum.
We'll follow her up and visit with this.
Okay.
Okay, we've already spoken, but yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you. We now go forward with, and I don't know if we have any reports. Our board gets a student enrollment report every month, and our enrollment at this time is higher than we expected, which is good. We also get a six-week's average daily attendance report. Is there any update on academic progress, Dr. Ritter, that you need to bring up tonight?
Actually, our students presenting our future learner profile tonight was our academic report tonight.
Well, thank you, and thank you for that. If you have your microphone on, something that I don't know that was made clear that the audience may need to know, during the presentation, and you had the students talking about our learner profile, would you explain to the audience here and the audience on television how we came up with that learner profile?
Absolutely. I don't know that this is working, so can you, is it working? Okay, okay. Yes, we, with the involvement of, really, it was over 200 teachers and administrators, parents, community members, and our board even helped participate. We had students also involved in identifying the criteria for future-ready learners that we want to promote here in San Angelo ISD. And so, really, what are the attributes that we want to see in our students as they move through our system and graduate and continue their learning for their future, and with a big focus on preparing our students for their future, not our present necessarily? So, it was with many, many months of input and feedback and participation in a collaborative process that we went through this process of pulling this together, and it's just been, now it's rolled out in our classrooms, and our teachers are using it and guiding their instruction. Our students are actually using it as they, we move forward with, including student voice in our instruction, and it's just been very exciting to see this in progress and now in our classrooms.
Is that in line with what the last lady asked? Is our learner profile something that, going to the saisd.org website, that stakeholders would be able to pull that up to see what it contains?
Yes, we are, tonight was a big step, that this was going to be presented to the board, because we, through our work, and we had not formally presented it to the board. We were waiting to do that tonight as part of the recognition because of your support in developing this. So, we're finalizing a very, a nice copy with student pictures and some different things that we're going to have to have as a published copy that will be put on the website, and we're going to have posters made of that format for every classroom in the district.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritter, and for all those that helped prepare that profile. We also sometimes have a report with a partnership with Good Fellow, and I don't, I don't know if we have anything tonight. Are we, Dr. Detloff?
No, so, Mr. Parker, I think it's important to note that even locally, you know, federal government challenges can impact us locally. Tonight, our Good Fellow Air Force Base liaison is not with us due to the government shutdown. So, even locally, you know, we are impacted many times by federal challenges.
Our consent items are next on the agenda. Do I have, hear a motion to approve consent items?
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion being made by Dr. Kingman and a second by Mr. Hernandez to approve our consent items. I will list those quickly. Consider quarterly investment report ending November 30th, 2017. Consider bid number 17-021, which is miscellaneous supplies, and consider bid number 17-022, curriculum and instructional materials. These are all things that we discussed at our pre-agenda workshop, and were placed on the consent item. Board members, does anybody, anyone have any other discussion regarding these items? Does the public have any comment on these consent items? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes. Dr. Bright, we have our audit report for the 2016-2017 school year that, will you introduce our speakers?
Yes, sir, we're pleased to announce our guest tonight is Amanda Hooker, and I don't want to steal all her thunder, but she's about to present an outstanding audit for our district, and as she's walking up to the podium, we discussed this last week, this is Denise Huffman, our controller. Her last audit she's going to go through, as she's planning to retire at the end of this month after 16 years with the district, and I'm going to guarantee you that 100% of this work is attributed to her. She's done an outstanding job for us over the years, and we're going to greatly miss her. So, with that said, Amanda, thank you for being here.
And I will echo what Jeff said. Denise and the entire finance staff is wonderful. We always appreciate their cooperation when we come out here and interrupt their lives. Audit report this year, have another unmodified opinion, which is a good opinion. There were no findings in this report. There are actually three reports. First one is on the financial statement, unmodified, good opinion. Second one is on clients, also unmodified, good. Third one is on the audit, which is federal fund, unmodified, no findings. Here, the net position increased 1.1 million, leaving 126 million in net position. Almost 100 million of that is restricted to capital assets, some is restricted, 3 million is restricted to state and federal programs, 3.8 million is restricted for debt service, that's payment bonds, and then the rest is unrestricted to operations.
Hold on just a second, Amanda. I think you've got to adjust your microphone.
It's cutting in and out back there, so it's not recording right.
Oh, okay. Do you have to start over?
No. You should be fine.
To me, okay. Budgeted figures, the district had 1.9 million in revenues over budget, and almost 2.3 million expenditures under budget, leaving the district in a good position at the end of, I think that's the highlights of the report, if anybody has questions.
Well, let me make something that I failed to mention.
Okay.
Amanda, you work with Richard Webb, CPA.
Yes, I do.
And Webb's been doing our audits for several years, and there were, at other years, we would ask Mr. Webb, when he would give these, if we had what appears to be this one. This is a outstanding audit, it's about as perfect an audit as we can have.
Yes, sir, the unmodified opinion means that we found nothing that needed to be changed in the financial statements.
Well, and as far as how that affects Denise, who this, we're unhappy that she's leaving, but very proud of her work, and Dr. Bright and his staff, that means that they've all done a great job maintaining our finances and our, the, our district is in very good shape financially. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, every year since I've been doing this, which I went back in my records, and that was since 2003, the district has received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and a copy of last year's certificate is in this, and we expect to get another one this year.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we really appreciate you taking time to be here, and I'll tell the audience here and then on television that you gave a probably 20- or 30-minute report to us last week, and you've also prepared your audit book. How many pages is that? I mean, we've, we've.
It's almost 150 pages.
Yeah, we've had a, it's a very extensive audit, and you've given us a very extensive reports and materials for us to review, so we appreciate all you and Mr. Webb and your staff have done also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I don't know who's going to, if anybody's here for, whether you're going to do it, Dr. Bright or Hope, but we have a proposed amendment for our district's official budget for the general fund.
Sure, it's just, if there's anything as such as a routine budget amendment, this would be one, we're simply moving money between functions.
All right, hear a motion to approve?
Motion for approval, second.
Mr. Dindel, did I miss something? All right, well, I'll go to this one before, I missed one item that called to my attention, that's why I've thrown everybody off. All right, we've had a motion to approve our proposed amendment for district official budget, general fund, and by Mr. Dindel and a second by Mr. Hernandez. Any other board discussion on this? Any public discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes. Now, we'll go back to, all right, I'm behind again. Uh-huh, I've already been told. If you can get the guys that did the facility study to come back, we'll start all, we'll start the meeting all over, all right? All right, we're back on the audit report. I got carried away talking to Amanda and forgot we didn't vote on it, so we need a motion to approve the audit report.
Move to approve the August 31st, 2017 annual financial report and the auditor's opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Kingman. Any other board discussion on the audit report? Any public comment regarding the audit report? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes. Now, we're, next item on the agenda is consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for November and December 2017. Dr. Bright? Move for approval?
My second.
All right, Mr. Dindel's moved for approval on this particular agenda item, second by Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board discussion?
Mr. Parker, just a note to the, those watching on Channel 4, that both of these months' reports were reviewed in depth during our pre-agenda meeting, and that in addition to that, all of these reports, including our checkbook, can be found online, saisd.org under the Financial Transparency tab.
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor on this particular agenda items, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes. Now, Matt Kimball, if I'm on, if I'm on topic now, will talk to us about early notice of resignation incentive.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. In an effort to anticipate our staffing needs for the 2018-19 school year, we are again asking for your approval to provide an early resignation incentive for contract employees to provide notice of end-of-the-year resignation to help us as we plan. Our early resignation notice incentive has been very successful the last seven years. This graph on the screen shows the history of the early resignation incentive and the number of employee, employees receiving the incentive. As you can see, last spring, out of 173 total resignations, we had 77 of those came through our early resignation process. We would again like to offer a $500 incentive for end-of-year resignations received by 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, March 22nd, 2018, and then a one-time payment of $500 will be issued in their April paycheck. We believe the early resignation notice is advantageous for our district by allowing us to anticipate openings across the district and hiring in the spring and early summer when the candidate pool is the strongest. The incentive is by no means intended to encourage, entice, cajole, whatever word you want to use, employees to leave. We don't want our employees to leave, but we know in some cases, they have other plans, they know they're going to be moving, and this just provides an incentive to those employees to let us know their plans in advance if they know of them. to let us know their plans in advance if they know of them. Knowing our teaching vacancies early also supports our transfer request process. It allows campus principals to know what openings they have, and then select for them in-district teachers that are wishing to transfer. We greatly appreciate your support on this, and would entertain any questions that you may have.
Any board questions? Again, this is one of those items that we discussed with some detail at our pre-agenda item. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion's been made by Mr. Dindal, and a second by Mr. Gallegos, to consider early notice of resignation incentive is outlined by Mr. Kimball. Is there any other board discussion on this item? Any public discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kimball. I think that's all we have to discuss tonight. We have on the agenda, which will be here for another month or so, to consider the superintendent evaluation. I will point out to board members, if you notice on your desk, there is a green folder, Gerard, that I would just want you to, that's for you to take home to help work on the superintendent evaluation. I think we also received something online, and I, what I'm going to need help on that I don't remember, is I don't remember when Mr. Lehman wanted us to get back with him on any work that we needed to do on that. Was he wanting that before our February meeting? Well, we need to, with that in mind, then do your homework, take home your, the materials you have, and get that back to him in case he wants to discuss it at our pre-agenda workshop, which I will make these announcements, the Finance Pre-Agenda Workshop next month, is February 12th, and our Regular Board Meeting is February 19th. It is, it was sent. If you didn't see it, be sure to get with Becky, but I think we've already sent it out.
Did you send that back? The evaluation?
You did.
Yes, sir. We sent it out Friday.
On Friday, fax?
But if you didn't get it, let me know.
On separate, okay, okay.
Should have an attachment.
All right. Unless there's any other announcements, and I, then I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here.